Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. This is the council workshop for the city of Bonnie Lake for March 21st, 2023. First thing we do is salute the flag, so everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. And I see Madam Clerk just walked into the chambers. That's wonderful. So could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman's.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right. Apparently, we do have an agenda modification to add AB 2354 as a discussion-action item. Is there a motion?
No move.
Nothing.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, unanimously, we have modified the agenda to add AB 2354. Okay, now we have a presentation from the...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the audience, there are copies of the item that just got added being brought down. As soon as they come down, they will be available on the table.
Us, too?
Yeah, for us. Yep.
No, no, y'all are in the dark.
We just approved, we just approved to add something, I have no idea what it is.
I know, right?
Yes, Councilmember McLehman.
So that motion was for discussion and action, correct?
Yes, it's a discussion slash action item. Okay. So now we do have our presentation from Deborah Grady, Executive Director of South Sound 911. Ms. Grady? Oh, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Question, our Board of Directors, one of...
Okay, thank you. So what does that mean? That means that 911 calls that are made by callers in Pierce County, whether it be a police fire or a medical emergency, are routed to South Sound 911 as the primary public safety answering point. We serve 38 agencies in Pierce County, meaning we answer their 911 and non-emergency calls for service and provide police fire and medical dispatch for the calls for service that we receive. In 2022, the Pierce County Council, through legislative action, identified and transitioned the responsibility of the 911 program office to South Sound 911. What that means is we represent the county and our agency at the state level with responsibility for ensuring 911 service and delivery to other secondary PSAPs in the county. This means that we support and interact at the federal level with Joint Base Lewis McCord. I have a really exciting project coming up this year that I'm going to be talking to you about in just a little bit. We interact with the Mount Rainier Ranger Station. At the state level, with the Washington State Patrol, we provide support and maintenance to their 911 call handling equipment. Locally, we support Tacoma Fire Communications. At the tribal level, we, just last year, the chair and I met with Puyallup Tribe to understand what their needs would be regarding 911 call handling currently. They're on a platform that would not allow them to take text to 911, and when we transfer calls to them, it's over a 10-digit line, meaning they lose some basic 911 functionality. So we're interested to hear if they'd like to participate and update their equipment. So the journey that South Sound has taken, in 2010, there were six 911 centers in the county. The cities of Buckley, Fife, and Puyallup all had their own communication center. The predecessor to South Sound 911, which was called LISA, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, had FireComm, and Tacoma Fire has a communication center. In 2011, members of the public safety community, elected officials and community members, successfully were able to pass Proposition 1 for a 1/10 of 1% sales tax, which was the foundational funding necessary for South Sound 911 to form. These individuals envisioned a consolidation of 911 services into what has become South Sound 911. Between 2012 and 2021, consultants were hired to provide recommendations to the governing body and the operations board at that time, and a couple of key components were call handling or call processing in the 911 center for best practices, changing our governance structure from an inter-local agreement to a public authority, and talking about a merging of the radio system so that they performed as a single system would perform. And specific uses of the Proposition 1 money are related to emergency communications, so call-taking plus dispatch, as well as radio communications. In 2021, the vision of these individuals was realized when South Sound moved four locations into... The picture on my right is our new facility located on Pacific Avenue in Tacoma. So while men, I know Councilmember McLehman's has toured our facility, Chief Jeter has been there. If any of you would like a tour of the facility, we'd be delighted to set that up, and we're very proud of the facility and the redundancy and sustainability of 911 services it brought to Pierce County. So just reach out and let us know. Our Board of Directors elected in February, so this year Chair Dorr was re-elected to the chair role. Pat McEligot, East Pierce Fire and Rescue Commissioner, was elected as our vice chair. In addition to our two board leadership, we have nine additional board members, for a total of 11 elected officials sit on our board. You'll notice Tacoma and Pierce County each have two seats, and those seats are designed under the bylaws that the largest to cost communication allocations will get two seats on the South Sound 911 board. So currently serving in those seats are Pierce County Executive Bruce Danmeyer and Pierce County Councilmember Robin Denson. In addition, City of Tacoma also has two seats. They are being filled by Sarah Rumba and Joe Bushnell. The next two largest cost communications each have one seat, and that would be City of Puyallup, as well as City of Lakewood. The fifth, sixth, and seventh positions all share two seats. Currently, that is the City of Sumner and the City of Fife, but not too long ago, your agency, your city was represented when Councilmember McLehman served on the South Sound 911 board. In addition, there are three fire seats on the board. The first is held by Central Pierce Fire and Rescue Commissioner Matt Holm, the second by West Pierce Fire and Rescue Commissioner Dan Rankin, and then our last position held by the East Pierce Fire Commissioner, Pat McEligot, is an appointed position by the entire Pierce County Commissioners Association. So his role, as appointed by that body, is to represent all the small fire districts. Underneath the South Sound 911 Board of Directors, there are two work groups, our advisory committees. The first is the Finance Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember or Board Member Branstadter from City of Lakewood. In addition to the Finance Committee, we have the Public Safety Communication Operations Committee, or the PSCOC. We're heavy on acronyms at South Sound 911, much like your police department might be. And that's an advisory group, both to myself and to the board, on operational matters and is assigned to the police and fire chiefs. The Chief Jeter participates in the PSCOC, and we appreciate his participation. Thank you, Chief. The responsibility of the Board of Directors are to approve contracts over $50,000, ratifying, also ratifying our collective bargaining agreements, approving our annual budget. South Sound is on an annual budget, which also includes the formula for our cost allocations and authorizing capital projects. I'm appreciative and grateful that the board also appointed me three years ago after the first executive director retired from the agency. When we talk about what we do, we'll start with operations because that's the 911 center predominantly, and of course, that involves processing and handling 911 calls for service in addition to non-emergency calls. The agency initiated a next-generation 911 technology in text to 911 so that those individuals that were unable to make a voice call to 911 could contact us via text. We have a primary radio work group assignment, and then we have a secondary radio work group assignment. So under the primary radio work group, that is where calls for service are dispatched, whether they be police, fire, or medical. The secondary radio group is after your officers make potentially a traffic stop or contact with the subject, they might have a piece of property or an individual to run to see if there's any outstanding wants or warrants. That information is communicated to the secondary radio channel so that the primary radio talk groups can continue to dispatch those incoming calls for service. The protocols for responses are set by the partner agencies, their chiefs, and could vary or differ from agency to agency depending upon that city's staffing and response plans. This slide I used to demonstrate an initiative that we launched last year that was a recommendation by the consultant that we refer to as universal call-taking. Prior to 2022, the 911 calls would come in, a law enforcement call-taker would screen the call, and if it was a fire or medical call, would transfer it across the room to another South Sound 911 employee that was working as a fire call-taker. Best practices in 911 service delivery are to minimize call transfers, and it reduces the time and improves the caller experience in getting a response started. So now, today, we have successfully implemented fully universal call-taking so that when your citizens call South Sound 911, the call-taker that answers the phone handles the call, whether it be police, fire, or medical. This slide is to share with you how busy we are. We are a busy 911 center. In fact, last week, we met with the representatives from the state 911 office. They said, did you know for 2022, South Sound 911 received the most 911 calls in the state, as well as in January already of 2023? So what that means for us is that each month, we handle or receive over 50,000 911 calls for service. And while you'll see we had an increase from 2020 to 21 during the, and following, getting out of the pandemic, the increase didn't stop into 2022. We're also anticipating that 2023, we'll see probably another increased year in calls for service. And while that number of emergencies is not necessarily a good thing, that community members are having an emergency and needing to call us, what I'd like to share with all our partner agencies is that we're really proud of our employees and how they stepped up, rose up to the occasion of the increase in the calls for service and did their best to manage the call volume and trying to meet the call-answer standards. There's a national standard for which calls should be answered a certain percentage of the time. With the support of the Board of Directors, we added staff in order to be able to meet that call volume this year. And on the daily reports that I get for our answering performance, I'm seeing that we're exceeding the national standard pretty regularly now, so really proud of our staff. On the Support Services side of our organization, that really is the area where our records division and technical services is housed. You can see there's a picture right in the middle of our front lobby, and that's where people come for concealed pistol license applications. They're required to get fingerprinted. We don't handle CPL processing for your city, but for several of our other partner agencies, they do, we provide that service for them. In addition, to the fingerprinting for the concealed pistol licenses, there's certain employment job requirements that require fingerprinting. We will handle those as well. Also, under Support Services is Technical Services. You might imagine that South Sound 911 is a heavy consumer of technology. If you come in and take a tour of our center, you will see that we really are. A view of our communications center floor sort of looks like a Star Trek module with all the screens and technology that's at hand for them. But under also Technical Services, we have numerous different specialties within our organization. We have 911 call-taking or equipment specialists, we have CAD specialists, we have network engineers, and we have a support center that several of our partner agencies contract with us because they don't have help desk staff in their budgets. So this chart, we just want to share where our revenues are coming from and talk to you about our 2023 budget just for a minute with you. We have approximately, we're estimating $57 million of revenue coming into the agency in 2023. The just slightly largest share of that revenue comes from the allocations from the partner agencies at 42%. What that looks like in numbers is about $24 million. $18 million comes from the communications allocation, and $6 million is contributed by the Support Services allocation. The sales tax at 41% is $23 million, we're estimating for 2023. The 911 excise tax is estimated to generate $9 million for 2023, and then our front-counter work, both from fingerprinting, disclosure, requests, public records, we're estimating it'll generate just under $550,000 for 2023. So out of the communications allocation, that $18 million, the law enforcement users are the biggest users of South Sound 911 communication services. Overall, the law agencies contribute about $14 million, and the fire agencies, four. For the City of Bonnie Lake, your communications allocation is $374,000. Your total, including the records communication, is $471,000. Your calls for service that I show for 2022 are about 10,000 calls for service annually for your police department. So there is a communications formula that says on the, that was approved by the board on the law side, 85% of the allocation is derived from calls for service and 15% from the agency's population. This chart is just to reflect where the expenditures are in the organization, our largest population of employees, and where the technology, a lot of the technology is on the communications center floor, so you can see that almost 50% of the expenditures are going to be for the communications center floor support and staff. Personnel and staffing is a big initiative for South Sound 911. Just like many agencies, we suffered during the pandemic, but made filling vacancies an initiative and a priority for our organization. We rolled out several recruiting programs and are really pleased to say that out of the 190 employees that are budgeted for work on the communications center floor, we're currently tracking 11 vacancies, which is down from the 20s, in the 20s. So that's good for our organization. Right now, the area that sees the most staffing challenge is with our law dispatchers, just because we start people with call-taking, and that's the pipeline to fill into one of the dispatch functions. We have a very active community relations team. If you don't follow us on social media, you surely can, and you should. We have, we have activity on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Our community relations team is refreshing posts very regularly, if not on a daily basis. They're highlighting employee, good work from employees, why employees want to work at South Sound, tips in 911 education for citizens, and agency highlights. In addition, in 2022, we had, we were able to hire a 911 educator and are very pleased that she's very active and engaged with educating especially schoolchildren on how to call 911. Between January and the end of this month, she will have already contacted this year 1,000 students. Pretty proud of her efforts. Last year, we initiated a volunteer program, and we're absolutely thrilled that three community members felt compelled and inspired to come and generously donate some of their time to supporting South Sound 911.
Sorry, did you say three or 30?
Three.
Okay.
Three. And they just bring a good engagement with our employees into the organization. You can see one of them there. One is assigned to community relations. He's with the Emergency Penguin, and then we have one assigned to records and the other assigned to finance. Additionally, the community relations team, which is more than just the 911 educator, they're out in the community when there's things like National Night Out. The community relations team, I understand, helped facilitate the Citizens Academy you recently had and provided a tour for those members. We also, our employees are very dedicated, they really care about the community. We have an employee-driven charitable giving team we refer to as the Carers Team, and throughout the year, there are events where we'll do food drives or back-to-school supply drives, and then those items are all donated to specific organizations. So the agency's been really busy up to today, and we don't see things slowing down. Currently, the agency is working with our law enforcement partners to replace our records management, also referred to as the RMS Replacement Project. We've got it engaged with a consultant to help the work group develop the RFP criteria to be able to go out for bid hopefully this year. We're really excited about an initiative that we have underway with 988, and actually, in January, the Board of Directors authorized signature of an agreement with the 988 service provider in Pierce County, which is Volunteers of America. Somewhat of a misnomer because they're not volunteers, they're trained and paid crisis professionals, but under that agreement, 988 will be providing three staff members to work in our 911 call center with our call-takers to have those people in crisis be able to have them pick up that call or take the call from our 911 call-taker. We're hoping that we actually have them working out on the floor second quarter of this year. We're...
Do you manage the call responders in? If our officers need one for a call, does that come in through you and is dispatched through you, or does that go through council?
It depends on the way the call comes in. It could be either multi-care. I understand dispatch is their own response team with their designated crisis responders, but South Sound is sort of available and in the middle of that, too, if need be, for reach-outs and contacts with the field agencies. We're always tracking next-generation 911 initiatives. The JBLM project that I spoke of a little bit earlier is really exciting. South Sound 911 successfully secured a grant for Joint Base Lewis McCord with, from the state 911 office, for $165,000. That'll replace their 12-year-old 911 equipment that currently is not next-gen compatible and able to receive text messages and is at end-of-life. We're estimating, because we sponsored the project and are remote hosting them off of South Sound 911 equipment, that we saved about $300,000. That project should be done by June. We also, once that project is finished and underway, we have the ability to provide a regional collaboration effort with other 911 centers, say Thurston County, or our King County partners on the south border, so that if there's an outage to 911, that we can be a backup center for each other if need be. And then last year, the Board of Directors conducted two study sessions to hear about and receive input on the radio system. Currently, there are two radio systems in the county. One is owned by Pierce County, we refer to it as the 700 system. The other is owned by the City of Tacoma, the 800 system. And the reason it's important to South Sound 911 is because two systems don't operate the same as a single system would and makes interoperability between the two systems a little more challenging than a single system would. So more to come on that. Discussions are underway with everyone involved at this point, including the radio owners' vendor Motorola, to understand what it would take to merge the two systems and have it perform as a single system. Chief Jeter's very active with that group and that effort as well. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any, for me.
You have calls from Bonnie Lake. Do you have one dispatcher primarily grabbing those because I know they're pretty, obviously very quick, but be on track what's happening in our city compared to the cities? Are you, are you jumping from one dispatcher to the next?
So when the call comes in initially, we're staffed with, depending upon the time of the day, up to 18 or 20 call-takers. And so the call-takers aren't assigned to a specific city, they're assigned to answer the calls. They enter the call into a computer-aided dispatch system that'll then route the call that gets entered into the CAD system over to the dispatcher that's handling the calls for their assigned work group. So it could be the Tacoma dispatchers will be taking Tacoma calls, they'll get routed, but the dispatcher that's handling Bonnie Lake would get the Bonnie Lake call.
They'll take the licensed numbers that they get called into, and that person that follows up when they're delayed and getting back to, when they're checking on officers that way, too?
Yes, so the call-taker would be gathering and performing what we call call interrogation, getting all the information that's needed for the dispatch of the call, then the dispatcher's interacting with the responding field unit.
They don't talk that fast? I've listened to them on the calls, and I can, numerous times, right along, I don't understand what they're saying. What should you say?
We're busy, they gotta get the information out.
I talk fast, my God, they're fast. Do a good job.
Thank you.
That's Mr. Fullerton.
I was wondering, so how come Bonnie Lake, with as many calls as we get, no longer has anybody on the Board of Directors?
So with Bonnie Lake, where you are with the cost allocation formula, you fall within that fifth, sixth, and seventh agencies that rotate to positions. So the next board or council member, I refer to him as board member, McLehman's was asking me that question, when would Bonnie Lake be back in the rotation? It wouldn't be till 2025.
Well, they broke the mold with Councilmember McLehman's. Nobody can follow him, so...
I don't disagree.
Councilmember McLehman's.
So I wanted to point out, you know, I got on council right at the beginning of the pandemic. Director Grady took over South Sound 911 right at the beginning of the pandemic. They were also in the middle of that construction.
They were also in, uh, the middle of that construction project. And then I believe they also had some labor relations to do. And the last time I remember, they had just moved in when I left and they were working to get to that national average of the response time, the call response time. I really didn't think they were going to get there so soon because it is a labor problem. It was a technology problem, it was a logistics problem. It was like a perfect storm of things not to work. A new director, new building, new people, new labor agreements. So I just want to take a moment and congratulate you on, on meeting that number because that was a tough number to meet and I, I still can't believe you got there. Um, and then the single dispatch, I think, um, one thing to understand there is that single dispatch was another trick. Because, um, the, the, if I get this wrong, I mean, I'm counting on you two to straighten me out because I was just learning all this stuff. But they had two different organizations doing fire and police. They brought them together and they had to agree on a lot of things. And there were, there were things that had to do with like, you know, your, your labor. Oh, we do it this way, you do it that way. That's more work. We want more money, right? You know, how you navigate that was, is like a trick, but they got it together into that single call thing, which is another, which was another trick. So that overall, I highly disagree with centralized control, right? Centralized money, centralized control. I believe it always leads to, um, uh, poor performance, but so far with 911, I think they've done a really good job. Well, thank you.
I did have a couple of questions. Uh, one of them being you, you did mention designated crisis responders going through multi-care. Is that, uh, do they all go through multi-care or does South Sound employ their own DCRs that may, uh?
Yeah, we don't employ the, uh, field responders. The only intersection that we are going to have at 911 with 988 is to have the call handlers on staff.
Okay. And I saw that there was the position of the crime analyst that you, that you saw then. What, what duty do they have?
So our crime analyst is there to support the law agencies. If she is amazing at mining data and getting research information. So if your agency had a crime they were trying to solve and they needed some help and more information, she's available and works, does phenomenal job with our partner agencies to help them with crime solving.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any further questions? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it and I will applaud. I don't know if anybody. Okay. So let's move on to council open discussion. Okay, who did I see first? Councilmember Evans.
I'm shocked. This is just something I want to kind of put to rest, so I want to make sure I bring it up so that the individual that's asking about it can, can get some final answers. And that was last week, we had someone come up and discuss the, the license for the marijuana store in Bonnie Lake that has been issued and has been issued for 10 years, I imagine, or close to it. I was initially for this many years ago because of the sales tax, the jobs and all that kind of stuff. There have been some things that have changed my mind, but I want to just kind of bring this up and throw it out to the council for discussion so that we can at least all agree that we've had the conversation. The, the positives for every dollar in direct sales, it's associated with 12 jobs across the state and marijuana sales make up 2% of the state's operating budget at $55 billion. So there, there are some positives to it. However, for me, the negatives far outweigh that now and that is armed robberies. In nine, or in 2022, there were 99 armed robberies at marijuana dispensaries. And that was up 247% from 40 robberies in '21, 35 in 2020, 16 in 2019 and eight in 2018. So it's significantly increased over the last five years. So basically 10.4% of all licenses, there's 1,031 licenses in the state, about 10.4% of all licenses have had an armed robbery. Now that could be one store's had a majority of them, but on average, 10% of armed robberies, or yeah, 10% of the marijuana stores have an armed robbery. Just to give you some FBI statistics in 2019, as far as armed robberies go, banks made up 1.4% of that. Gas stations and service stations were 3% and convenience stores were 6.6. So between banks, gas stations and convenience stores, that made up 11% of armed robberies across the nation. Marijuana stores are at 10.4% in Washington State. So, and this isn't just robberies, this is armed robberies. This is with, with a gun. Those stats come from the December 26, 2022 Seattle Times. So, um, like I said, initially, five, six years ago when we had the debate, I'm pro-business. If, if there is a legal business to be had and someone has the authorization to run that business, it's not for me to decide if they can or cannot. However, as far as being the chair of public safety and being on this council, the public safety aspect of that outweighs my opinion on the business aspect of that. And so for that, I would never authorize the, the reversal of the current moratorium we have on the marijuana store in town. So with that said, I'll throw that out there if anyone's got any, any other things to add to it.
Yeah, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, not to mention it's actually still federally illegal. So that can change at the drop of a dime if the president decides to write a letter. And I believe it still stands that if for some reason the, the federal government decided to change the laws in Washington State and make it illegal in Washington State, um, we could be personally held accountable for every single sale that goes through the, through Bonnie Lake. But I'm not sure if that's correct information anymore. In 2015, it was. I'm still against it and especially with the new, um, pursuit laws and everything else, there's, there, the chances of catching any of these criminals anymore is pretty much in the toilet. So, thank you.
Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was against it back then, still against it now. I was, I was concerned about crimes in a city and possible issues of any more police protection over that part of the town. And you see how much it's increases. Mr. Evans has also brought forward to us and forward to us and I don't see any need for that. The amount of money that cities have will make up, I understand, has decreased quite a bit. So between those, those things going on, I don't see any need. We have two places close by in Bonnie Lake, they can go there. And I don't see a need to improve that, add that to our cities. So I'd still be against it.
2022, sales are down 12%. So, so too with that would be the tax drop. I was trying to find out what Buckley had and when we first considered this four years ago, I believe, I want to say it was around $101,000 in sales tax. And I believe that was between both stores that they have. So we'd be looking at, you know, when our population is, is a little higher, I'd imagine we'd be in the $60,000 range for, for that. But that doesn't even cover half a police officer for the, uh, for a year's worth of, of service to help increase the, the increased threat of robbery there.
Well, the gentleman was here already talked about he had one or two robberies as, as other stores.
He had three, right? Three. Do you know what, can you tell us what years those were? What years were those? Well, that's the thing, we can. You know, and that's what I'm attempting to do. And that's 3% of the robberies came from your stores. You know, and regardless of how many, how much steps go into preventing those, it, it's still a cash-based business. I mean, that's one of the flaws in, in the whole thing is it's set up to be a target no matter what, what things you put into that to, to stop it, yeah.
Where did those robberies happen?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of order. We, this is our discussion here. I know Mr. Evans reached out to him, but without approval from the whole council, this is just us discussing here, not with the public in the audience. Is that correct?
Oh, no, that is correct. A point well taken.
Thank you.
And do we have any further discussion from the councilmembers? Councilmember Baldwin.
I will say that just in regards to the makeup of the city, this isn't something that I would ever support anyway. Any kind of business that is, it, it kind of in this realm is just not something that I would support. However, I am curious, like what, you're saying that a license was then given out for then?
It's not something the city does. It's from the state liquor and cannabis board. They pick the cities, up to the cities to, to allow or disallow that to happen. But, but his license for Bonnie Lake, he can't go to Auburn because it's specific to a city that's been issued to it.
What action are you proposing that we take?
Uh, nothing. We already have everything in order. I, Sonny's come many, many times. I respect him for coming out and asking and, you know, trying to bring the business side of things to it and, and I didn't want to do him a disrespect by having him come last week and not bring it up this week in an open discussion. Currently on our books, we are not authorizing any use of that. If he did open, it would be a code violation with, you know, daily penalties and stuff. So I don't think there's any action we need to take. I just, out of respect for him coming, I wanted to get him an answer. So, you know, he wasn't pursuing something that may not be a viable option for him financially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember-
And we weren't totally 100% positive. That way I went forward, went to the city, asked the citizens what they thought about it too. They voted against it also. So not only were we not sure about going forward, but the city, at that time, the citizens said no too.
Yeah, the, the initial vote, which 10 years ago overturned that, based on the precincts of Bonnie Lake, it was positive in favor of that. However, when it came down, and that was the legalization of it, when it came down to when we as a city put it out for a, um, a non-binding vote, the residents said that while they were okay with the law of the legalization of it, they had no interest in facilitating a business within our city limits for it.
Any further discussion on that particular item? All right, any further, okay, Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so I went to the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District meeting, uh, last week and they were talking about, uh, it's called policy 3211. And there's, um, in that policy, there's, uh, the Bonnie or the Sumner Bonnie Lake directors did a nice job of trying to temper it down. The one that was present at the Pialup School District just blatantly said that teachers aren't supposed to tell parents when their child is, um, uh, making claims of their identity, sexual identity and that they are not to share that with the, with the parents. That to me is like really disturbing. I invested in my children, I'm investing in my grandchildren. If they're having serious questions about things, you know, I want to be involved. And so anyway, so there's some urgency to the item I brought up, the, the ordinance because Sumner Bonnie Lake is, uh, directors are considering that 3211. It will come, it's at its second reading, so it can come to a vote for approval. And so I think as we go forward, I'm trying to get this on the agenda so that we can talk about it and we can help the directors understand that, um, you know, what the character of Bonnie Lake is. I also pointed out that in the RCW very clearly defines something called, um, social competency. And that social competency very clearly is defined so that local jurisdictions such as ours can say, this is our culture, right? And that they are bound as a definition by policies that they have to respect that. Not only do they have to respect it, they have to have training to show that they're tolerant of the local cultures. So that's the reason that we, as a city council, should take some action to make it clear what the culture in Bonnie Lake is and what we, what, who, for who we feel we represent. So that's all I have.
All right, Councilmember Evans.
Uh, thank you for that. The, the only caveat I would add to that is not on the content of the message, but, and, and this was brought up, you guys all saw the email I sent over personally to the Pierce County Council. And I think we have an obligation to, to speak individually towards other municipalities, other, um, government authorities or agencies such as a school board.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That's all good. Where, where I think personally as a council, getting in the, getting into other jurisdiction or municipalities, boards and commissions as a whole, I, I could not support. However, I could support individuals doing that, reaching out to a school board, reaching out to a county council, reaching out to your, your other local jurisdictions. I, and it has nothing to do with the message that you're, you're trying to say. This, this to me is just, there's a legislative body there for a reason. And while I think I can reach out directly to the, the school board if I had a concern with that or, or any other jurisdiction, I don't know that us as a council should be doing that. And, and also in the sense that if we did something that the city of Bothell did not appreciate and the city of Bothell wrote a resolution about what Bonnie Lake was doing, I don't know that that would be as well heard or appreciated as much as if someone from the city of Bothell reached out directly to us and shared their concerns. You know, it, for me, it's, it's not necessarily stepping on toes, but it's, it's working within your boundaries of what your legislative duties are. Our, our legislative duties as a city council per what our, our, our code says has nothing to do with, with, um, school boards or, um, environmental control boards or things like that. However, I do believe that as a council member ourselves, we have the responsibility to act if that's something that we personally believe. So while I can understand what Councilmember McLeimans is saying, I don't know that I could sign on to anything that is a council-sponsored thing. However, I have no problem individually if anyone wanted to send a letter out to another jurisdictional legislative body as that individual, even as a council member, just not necessarily representing the council.
Hey, Councilmember Baldwin.
I do agree with you in the fact that you can reach out to, you know, individuals or even just a governing body to, you know, send out a message. And it probably does have more impact, you know, rather than maybe creating an ordinance. However, I'm not sure that I agree with your, your Bothell comparison just simply because, you know, this, this juris, this legislative body, which would be the Sumner, you know, school board, has an effect on our families. And so that's different. It just is. I, I think if there, if, if you had given a little bit more of a apples-to-apples comparison, I could, I could maybe then consider. But I think in this particular example, it, it's not just some sort of, you know, policy that's being, you know, placed, you know, far away. It's, it's actually something that is directly affecting our families here in Bonnie Lake. And I really do also feel that, you know, parents are trying their best to try to communicate with that, um, that governing body and they're just not, they're just not listening. And so I think, I think what, uh, Councilmember McLeimans is trying to just stress is, you know, what is it that we can just do further as the actual governing body? That you're right, we don't have, you know, power over them, um, but, but it does send a message to say, hey, like this might be worth, you know, listening to, considering, whether it's through individual messaging or even an, I think an ordinance would send a similar message. But I do agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, in that same respect, then the, the school board could write an ordinance saying that they don't appreciate us doing something as well. And we're here representing our, our constituents just as they are doing the, the same down there. So, you know, it would, it would be, it would be tough if we supported something, um, you know, the, the, we, we all came through and supported the, uh, the Freedom Proclamation, right? And if the Sumner School Board said, well, we don't want that, we want all of our students wearing masks, we oppose that. I don't know that we would have adhered anymore to that consideration. I don't know that we would have adhered anymore to that consideration from, from that board. Now, you know, being reached out individually by the board members may have persuaded an individual vote on that. But, you know, I, I think there's boundaries there for a reason. And, and like I said, taking it as a group to another group, I think, is, to me personally, crossing that boundary. Where I think taking it personally to that group, I think is well within our, our scope and, and responsibility in, in many cases.
I think just, is it, is it okay if I just respond? I, I think the, the, and I definitely get what you're saying. That definitely makes sense. I think just, um, when I think about, you know, not being on the council and being, you know, just a layman who is constantly trying to have a voice, but isn't having a voice, right? Like even if we were to send a message, we have the power to do that when our, our constituents can't. And so that's where, I think that's where the frustration sometimes comes with the people is when they feel like something needs to be said. They would like someone to say it, someone of a governing body, someone with, you know, some sort of pull, rather than like them just trying to make phone calls to the school board. Because again, emails and phone calls to the school board, they don't, they don't listen. They do not listen. And, um, I don't know. I, I go back and forth with it. I do hear what you're saying though.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, so the particular issue that's being brought forward is actually a public safety issue. And, um, this is the safety of our children, whether it be their mind, body, soul, spirit, their whole being. This is dangerous ground that, that these people are walking on and they are crossing a line. And I think that as a council, this will eventually come across our desk, whether it be through the police department because somebody has been attacked in the school or, um, however, you know, there can be deaths that are involved. A lot of these things actually cause death and destruction. So it, and this is happening in our backyard and this is part of our school district. This is the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. And, um, I just, I agree with councilmember McLeimans that we definitely need to take a stand because this is going to affect us at some point. And as far as like, um, the housing, um, bill that was going through Pierce County, I think we as a council should be writing a, a letter to Pierce County because, uh, councilmember, Pierce County Councilmember Morrell came and spoke to us. He gave us a warning of what was coming down our, down the pike. And that definitely is going to affect us in some way because it's going to come across our desk as something that we're going to have to change zoning laws or change ordinances for housing through the GMA Act, the Growth Management Act, as well as the comprehensive plans and changing our codes and everything else. And so I, I feel like at some point, you know, there are times when we need to write a letter as a council. And sometimes it's, it's what you might consider a moral judgment, but that morality actually comes down to, um, right and wrong at some point.
You cannot legislate morality. People have tried for centuries. You can't. Did you write a letter to the Pierce County Council?
I did.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah, and I think that's the right way to do it. I'm not here to debate the merit of, of what the school district is trying to do, but there's also no laws in Pierce County that says you can't run for a school board position and be on the council as well. So, you know, there, there's complete other options that are, are suitable for that. And, you know, like I said, I'm not here to debate the merits of, of what they're doing. We represent everyone in the city. I would imagine that there is a portion of the city, if, even if it were to be one-seventh of the population of the city, that would actually support this. So to, to sign on to everything as a complete legislative body, we are alienating other people in this area, in, in this, if, if we were to do that in this letter. So I want to make sure that we're representing everyone equally. And I think that's why doing it personally is a way to do that. Because, um, I'm not here to necessarily represent me. I'm here to represent my people. And, and there are people that are for a marijuana store. There are people that are for a gun ban. You know, there are people for, for and against every particular aspect. And, you know, we need to, to represent them equally and fairly. And, and that's why I think, you know, trying to, trying to summarize everything into a one-lump letter kind of breaks against that particular aspect because then we're just doing the opposite of what the, what the school district is being accused of. And that's not listening to everyone. You know, we represent non-parents as well. We represent parents of trans and LGBTQ communities. So I don't want to make a broad blanket statement that, that alienates anyone. So that's why I think making that personal statement is, is the better choice.
This particular ordinance doesn't go against anybody. It's just protecting the children from being exposed to particular materials that is inappropriate for certain age groups.
Well, I'm reading Policy 3211, which says, "Gender-inclusive schools, transgender and gender expansive student rights and supports." So, but, you know, like I said, I'm not here to talk about the merit of it, but that, that is what 3211 is as far as the title goes.
And councilmember McLeimans.
Do you want to go or do you want me?
Well, I was, well, if you don't mind, sorry. Um, I was just going to say, I know this is open discussion portion and we're trying to get this onto a council workshop in the future. I know there was a couple of workshops coming up that are very busy with other things. So I'm looking currently at the May 2nd workshop. It looks like that would be a appropriate spot to put that so we can have a robust discussion and everybody can be prepared for that discussion. So I would just throw that out there that we could continue this discussion at that time if we want to, if we're, if everybody's okay with that moving on.
Now, given deputy mayor's point, may I ask for leave so I can ask one question of the deputy mayor? It's a procedural question.
Yes.
Thank you. Is, I think councilmember Fulton made a, a very good point about this being a public safety issue. Has the Public Safety Committee put this on their agenda to talk about before we get to the, before we get to the May agenda?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay.
Yeah, it is not on ours.
Okay, and are y'all meeting before that?
Uh, we're meeting in April, but I don't know that it'd be worth.
Putting it on the?
Especially if we're going to talk, talk fully about it in, in the open anyway.
I mentioned it's going to come back to all of us to talk about.
Yeah.
Might as well just talk about all of them.
Yeah, I prefer that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I want to clarify, you know, um, I was trying to make a case for the urgency for the issue to come before the council. This, the ordinance wouldn't, uh, really change 3211. And except for, you know, the RCW 28A 415 443, definitely was, that definition definitely, uh, points to our local culture. This ordinance would show, and by the way it's introduced and by passing it, would show that this culture says parental rights to protect children from sexually explicit material is important. So when issues come before the, the directors and Sumner Bonnie Lake, they can point to that and understand. They can also use that, that it's, it's a way for us to communicate our character and our, our community. They're bound as educators to respect that through that definition. And as that definition applies to policies coming out of WADA, policy, their educational training, their professional training. And so things like this, I think, are important because Bonnie Lake is not Tacoma. Bonnie Lake is not some of the municipalities around us. And this is the area that we're drawing, um, educators from. And so there is, um, inside the Teachers Association, there is a very active activist group there that's pushing policies that definitely don't align with Bonnie Lake. And the directors understand that. They did a nice job with 3211. It has nothing to do with this ordinance, other than the fact is it shows you, this is coming and it's coming fast. It's organized, whether it's through library books, that somebody's paying good money to organize, or it's coming through policies at school boards. Parents are being separated from children in a systematic way. That's my, that's my personal take on it. And my concern is, I just want to send a message that Bonnie Lake, we respect parents and their ability to parent their children. That's my concern. That's the number one concern I have here. And that's why I'm saying, I'm trying to close a loophole in the law. There's a loophole in the law that says, um, let's take for example, just for the case of argument, this is just for argument case, uh, the deputy mayor has a red shirt on. Let's just say for educational purposes, I need him to have a red shirt. So his shirt is red for educational purposes, right? So that's what the law says. The law says, I can tell you something, as long as it's for educational purposes, you're okay with it being red. What color is his shirt?
Green.
Green. His shirt's always going to be green. That's physics. That's what it's going to be. For educational purposes or not, his shirt is green. The loophole, if you look at the change we're making to the law, the law says explicit sexual material is not explicit sexual material. If I use it for art or sexual or for education, right? So, and my whole point is sexually explicit material is always sexually explicit. It just is. It's a loophole that we've inserted in that definition so that we can say, well, it's not if I'm using it for an example of education or I'm saying it's art. And I'm like, I just want to get rid of that part, that loophole. And I want to say, no, it's sexually explicit. And minors should not be, anyway, we can debate it later. I just wanted to, what 3211 was really just trying to say, here's another instance. The library, the school district, the, all the policies are at, parents are not to be trusted to raise their children. They're not to be told about these things, right? And, and we're making policies to avoid that. And I personally don't think the parents in Bonnie Lake really appreciate it. I, I have yet to find a parent that thinks that that is, is overridingly important for us to do. Most people are like, no, I want to be involved in my child's life. I want to help them through these hard times because they're hard discussion.
Okay, councilmember Watson.
Well, I appreciate all of your opinions. I understand where you're coming from. I don't agree with having an ordinance for a city I won't vote for in the future. Because I think this, that's, that's why we have our schools and them to make the right decisions for the kids and with the parents. They see these kids every day and the parents every day. And they're the ones that are helping work in them and raising them. We govern the city itself. How the city's run. We can't tell the school or how they should be addressing these issues, just like we can't tell the library what books the students should not have. That's them to take care of properly. And if they don't, that's your right and you should get your whole community around you writing letters, complaining and making a change for it. As a city, that's no place for us to get into. And if we bring it forward, the vote, like I said, I'll vote no against it. I might even walk out. That's not our business to do that. And I don't believe we should get into that at all. Because we're working with the school district, they're working with us. Well, just like the state, some of the things that we may bring up, the, the county or the state to do, we don't agree with. As an individual, you should do it, and Mr. Evans has been done, doing before. As a council, it makes it very difficult, makes it very challenging for us in the future to get things we might want with the school district working with us and vice versa, and with the state that, that way too. So I support your views and I support you can more people write to the, to the school board what they're doing as a council. We have no business going in that direction. We're getting into uncharted areas and stuff I really don't agree with at all. And I'll fight to get that not going through for us.
Any further commentary? All right, any further issues on open discussion before we move on? Okay, councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. A little bit of a much lighter issue here, of course. Parks, so just FYI to the council public. They've probably seen that the new field that is being constructed over Allen York is coming to completion here in a little while. Congratulations to the staff and everything for getting that all done. There's a little area where they need to put down some specialized product on the field during a dry period of all things. So they're hunting for that dry days to come. And it could be, you know, the way it goes around, it's a long, it's several days, multiple five, maybe or more in a row before they can do that, before the field can be used. Anyways, you know, at some point, the field will be available for athletic use. It will be, um, probably used quite a bit. It is probably in demand because according to the reports, are there many, many, many athletic groups that want to come up there and use it? Because it's an all-weather field, whether it's rugby, soccer, football, baseball, all the different sports, lacrosse, that one too. There, we're working on a different fee structure. So that's, you know, the FYI for the council, of course, because that field is very different. So there'll have to be probably a recommendation that'll come through CDC for a change in the structure for the cost for the rentals and different things there. Because there could be like group rentals or, you know, league rental. There could be nonprofit, it could be in-out city, you know, all those types of issues. We'll have to work through that and staff is going to work on some proposals for that. And that circles back around to, of course, taking care of these facilities. And that one, the parks, the trails, there are many, 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 many acres of open space, recreation facilities in the city. My impression that, or understanding, there's basically two assigned FTEs right now for all of our parks. So we're going to be running short on that, I suspect. You know, you're going to be looking at staff again proposing solutions for that. So depending on where the charges are, where, you know, where, um, what they can do, what the maintenance looks like at these fields, it'll be kind of a work in progress for a little while to try to figure out what is the requirements there. Because obviously we could have, you know, partnerships with groups to take care of the fields at times, but, you know, it's not going to be 24/7 kind of thing. So there's always going to be the need likely for more labor in parks and, you know, to take care of that. And so that, you know, brings you back to a budget proposal, it's future. So, you know, FYI, we're not going to have it obviously now, but it'll be coming to try to figure out what we do with that. And there is, as mentioned by our financial folks, there are competing interests out there because there are shortages in other areas, as there usually is in wants and needs. So that's the update on that. I'm just excited at some point in time in the coming months to be able to get that field in use, but it probably won't be until April or May.
May, yeah.
Depends, you know, if it dries up for, right?
May flowers.
Unfortunately, usually it's. Councilmember Evans.
Uh, councilmember Watson on Saturday and I on Sunday went and attended the Bonnie Lake High School Panthers Robotics Team competition. They finished the first round in first place. I believe they finished overall in third or fourth. I don't remember how the scoring finally ended up. But it was super amazing to see these young kids, um, putting these robots together. And, and so in my, in my day job, I work with some space companies and they, as they're launching satellites, um, watching how the mechanisms of the satellites shoot out from, from their, their housing, and then watching these 15, 16, 17-year-old kids. I had my, my sales rep with me and, and he's like, this is virtually identical to the launch mechanism for, for the satellites, the, the way the mechanics work and everything. So, so, um, the, the future is bright for engineers, especially here at Bonnie Lake. And, and this was a competition from around the state. But it was great to see all the kids getting excited and, and kids that didn't have a place otherwise to find a spot in, you know, a tech field that, you know, can put them into a future position in, in engineering and, and especially in this area where it's such a growing, thriving field. So it was really cool to see the competition and just out, I mean, these robots are fast.
Yeah.
Super fast.
It was amazing to be there on Saturday. I just was blown away watching these kids, so intense. The amount of people that were there.
Oh, yes.
I mean, trying to find one parking space for me to get there was just phenomenal. And just seeing what's going on and watching them. And they got mascots down there jumping around and everything. I mean, it's, it's an intense thing and it's a great job they're doing. They're all over and stuff. It's like watching them race tracks down in Florida and the car racing down there. I mean, they're all over it.
The super impressive thing is while this is housed at the high school, it is a fully grant and donation-funded program. So, um, they do have a website. If you look up Bonnie Lake Robotics Team, um, just Google that. They do have some donation sites. It's certainly a well-worthy investment for, for our community, so.
I'm glad I went, I had no idea it was.
Yeah, yeah, it was great.
Any, oh, yes, councilmember Fulton.
Yeah, going back to councilmember Swatman. I thought that we had spoke with Ryan and he had suggested that for this particular park, the new one, because of the turf, that we were, we were, didn't we agree to put in the budget that we were going to pay for the maintenance from the company that's actually building it?
We do. We have some money in the budget for that. But we're talking about everything, you know, trash collection, locking the gates, all, all those type of logistical activities that go around in the whole park system.
Or details coming.
Yeah.
Right.
All that stuff.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, before we move on, I do feel the need to announce. All right, before we move on, I do feel the need to announce, given Councilmember Evans' commentary, very, very appropriate commentary on our robotics team. I, at the beginning of May, will be traveling with the culinary team from Bonnie Lake High School, where we are representing nationally.
Yeah.
The, the, it, it won't be the culinary itself, we lost by half a point, but the restaurant management team. We won state, and we are representing nationally in Washington DC at the beginning of, of May. And that will be very, very fun to see how we come out with that. So, and it is also grant-funded, but for the parents, we, it's out of pocket for us.
Keep us informed.
Yes, I'll, I'll let you know.
I think that's a great one to be a part of, just, I mean, you get to watch baseball, you can watch, but to actually eat amazing food.
Oh, absolutely. It, it is, it is five-star material. All right, let's move on. Let's see, we do, oh, yes.
Sorry, one, one last thing. I think you have a sweats and socks deal against Sumner.
Oh, yes.
The mayor's challenge you might want to let everyone know about.
Let's talk about that. There, yeah, there's a couple of things. We had a challenge when I was, oh, by the way, I need to congratulate Deputy Mayor Carter and Chief Police Jeter for weathering through my talk over at the, over at the Community for Families issue, over at the school board issue. But we were also issued a challenge, a sweat and sock collection challenge from Mayor Hayden over in, in Sumner. And this is something that I believe is going to end mid-April, I believe.
Yeah, the winner will be announced at the community summit.
Yes, but they are starting to overtake us. I believe that is, considering the fact that we're a city of close to 25,000 people now, and yes, I am rounding up. They're around 8,000. I think we can actually get something going here. Yes, I'll round it down. We need to actually get on the ball and, and get moving on that. What's that?
What do you need?
Sweats and socks.
Like, what's wet?
No. Sweatpants.
Oh.
No, no, brand new. Sweatpants or sweatshirts.
Yes.
And socks, three different garments.
Right, and each will be counted individually as far as the numerical count, so.
Well, now I'm aware of it. I could probably reach out to Lance or Kid's house.
That would be wonderful.
We have lots that, it gets recycled, maybe I'll just add it to your count.
Yeah, and we can announce to the Rotarians and the Kalanys and, and all of them so that we can get busy on that.
Does it have to be brand new with tags?
They do, they do prefer brand new. So that, that was one of the criteria, that, that they did want it brand new.
What does this benefit?
It will benefit the homeless, mostly children. So getting children sizes would be, would be preferable here too. And we don't know what the challenge will be at the end, but I can tell you on Friday, I am prepping to get slimed over at Bonnie Lake High School because they did meet their food drive criteria over there. I do plan on purchasing a Sumner High School shirt to, to wear so that I can be slimed in the proper material. But it might involve something along those lines, so I don't want to be slimmed twice.
If we could get clarification on what the loser would have to do, it may encourage us to donate to Sumner.
And where do we turn in these sweats?
Well, that is something. Yeah, it would be here at the municipal.
In the city's office.
Park's office.
All right, now I believe we can move on. So we will have a review of the council minutes. Councilmember Watson?
There are no corrections.
Very good, and we can, we will now move on to our discussion item tonight. Mr. Johnstone.
Two different items that I'm hoping that staff can get direction on. The first is operation of the boat launch for the 2023 boating season. And the second is watercraft trailer parking for the 2024 and beyond boating season, all at Allen York Park. So if, if you haven't had a chance, please, please do read through that. I'll give you, I'm going to jump right to the discussion points in the memo, so for sake of, excuse me, for sake of time. We'll start with the 2023 boat launch operations. Just to give you a quick update, Public Works has prepared parking, the parking lot for Field Four to accept watercraft trailers this summer. There'll be 26 spaces available. The problem that we, we've identified, of course, is that on hot days, that boat launch receives more than 26 users. And so we've, we've got a lack of parking spaces. So what happens here is that generally speaking, users come in, they drop their boat in the water, and then they pull away, and they want to go park their vehicle. If there are no parking spots available, they're not going to be aware of that until after they've already put their boat in the water. And then we're putting them in the awkward position of potentially having to park illegally, or running all the way home when they didn't plan on it to drop it off. It's, it's an inconvenience for sure. So from a staff perspective, we came up with three different options that we'd like to consider. Of course, every option always has to have a no-action alternative. That's number one, which is just close the boat launch for the 2023 season. I'll move on because I know that that's not something that's popular. Number two would be a modified closure similar to 2022, which was when passes were sold to City of Bonnie Lake residents only, or perhaps open the boat launch to human-powered vessels only that don't require trailer parking. Or option three, which would be to provide funds to hire private security, as the example I used here, to monitor the parking lot as well as the boat launch. So that when the parking lot is full, that can be communicated back to the person who is operating or watching the boat launch. They can then be notified that the parking is full. They can then close the boat launch until more parking becomes available. So those are the three options that we proposed. We're hoping that we can get some direction from you tonight on which option you would prefer. And I thought we would go ahead and address this one first, and then I'll move on to the 2024 boat trailer parking.
Okay, Councilmember Fullerton.
So my thinking is we could just keep it the way that we had it. I mean, I know there was a lot of, there was a lot of problems, but then it also went quite well. You know, there was, there was good parts to 2022 and, and bad parts. But I think if we maybe for this year, put it out there again that, you know, we have limited parking, we do have more parking than we had in 2022, but we have limited parking, so plan on possibly taking your, your trailer home if, if there's not parking, you know, if the, all the stalls are taken. And just have it be Bonnie Lake again, the way that it was, until we can get more parking. I don't know, I just, I, I feel like it wasn't ideal what happened last year, having zero parking at all, but this is at least something for now, until we can get a new parking lot opened, hopefully for 2024.
Councilmember Swatman, and then Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, and I think I agree with the same kind of a concept because, you know, and again, you know, with the proviso that staff and all gets to manage whatever they need to do, you know, and operational things, they need to, you know, decide that, hey, this isn't working, I need to close this, or I need to open, you know, those things go on. But we have the same scenario we did last year, which is kind of the overall concept is city residents only, we're not going to guarantee you parking, we prefer that you park someplace else. And, but, you know, there's a lot of times when the parking will work for people because there are many times when people use that boat launch for, in the early mornings. They use it in the afternoons. There's a lot of times where probably the amount of space would be appropriate for them to be able to park, you know, boat trailer parking only in there. But there's going to be a bunch of times that it's not going to work, and there's going to be issues. And that's where our professionals kind of like do their thing and have at it, right?
Councilmember Baldwin.
My recollection was not that it went well. I'm, I am a little confused. Yeah, I, I think in, in the conversations with Chief Jeter, and also just, you know, with, with residents coming and speaking to us at public safety meetings, it was very much a fiasco. Out-of-towners would come in, and they would, you know, overload, you know, the front of someone's, you know, property, and then cause, you know, difficulty, and people being able to, the boat especially, like the thought of driving my boat there with my big old truck, and then putting my boat in, and then I'm, you know, then I don't know where to park. That, that just seems like a logistical nightmare to me for a boater. I, and so with that, I, I think we really do need to potentially consider, I don't think it is a good idea to close the boat launch. So yeah, option one, not super, not a huge fan with that. I do like the idea of three, but then again, that then comes with the question of how are we going to pay for that? Because it is looking like it's $72,000.
Approximately.
Just for that security detail for them to coordinate talking to boaters that are putting their boats in and then closing parking based on who's coming in and who's.
Correct, yeah, I don't want to speak out of turn. The, the chief actually did get an estimate for those services, and that was the number that I received.
Is that five days a week, or just Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
That's seven days a week.
Seven days.
We would have two at the park, one of them checking when people come in, and the other one kind of doing foot patrol. We had, we would have one at the launch and one at the parking area.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Great question. So then, is there a possibility that, again, I, I am not, I do not agree with the free-for-all. I know, I know what that does. I saw the pictures, I heard all the reports from the officers, as well as Bonnie Lake residents. But is there a way that, you know, on, I guess, the peak days? I know it, it's also dependent on the weather, of course, but, you know, most likely, I'm assuming Thursday, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, instead of just seven days, is it a possibility that there was a shortening of, yeah, the, the days?
It's certainly possible, but then it's going to fall on the police department to regulate it. I would not advise against doing self-regulation. You're going to get just people without trailers parking in there. You're going to get people illegally parking in there. You're going to get 40 stuffed in there. It's, it's not going to be safe to, to do that. And you need to consider, it, it's $72,000 to, to monitor that. Is, is that worth it? That's a discussion and a decision for you. From, from my point of view, it wasn't ideal last year, but it was a workaround. I, I stand by, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't believe that that boat launch, it is not made for the, the types of trucks, vessels that are being launched today. It's more in line for human-powered vessels or boats that you throw in the back of a pickup truck. And I don't know what the parks consultants are going to say. Like I said, I'm not an engineer. I just know that it is a huge problem for our staff to manage, and it's just not safe. If somebody has to launch a boat, they have to pull out onto West Taps there and totally block the highway. And the queue-up spot is right along where citizens are walking. And now we're going to have 26 spots there. And again, the plan with this financial plan, the security wouldn't even start till 10:00 AM. So you would have the possibility of people getting in there, filling it up before security even gets. So you just have to, and again, we're the ones that are left to manage it. And, and it is frustrating for us. And I know it's not popular, but I think the, the council really needs to consider making it a human-powered launch only, or one that doesn't require trailer parking. That, that to me is a future, and again, I, I guess I'll leave it to what the consultant says. But that is certainly the best option for staff to manage. And we're not throwing $72,000 at it to get 26 parking spots for three months. So that, that's just my point of view.
And I'll just add to that, the consultant that Jason Sullivan has hired for the Parks Trails and Open Space, Space Plan, I believe is planning on returning April 18th to talk about the specific Allen York Park-related improvements that we discussed needing to see as quickly as possible, discussed that last year. So they will be returning shortly.
Are, on April 18th, are we actually meeting? I thought we had a.
Then it will be the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I, I want to, I don't know if I misspoke or not, but I, I don't believe that we had a free-for-all last year. We had permits issued only to Bonnie Lake citizens, and we told them that they had to park at home. And it was better than closing the launch. And I think if we just keep it that way for this year as well, until we get more parking, then it's basically Bonnie Lake citizens only can purchase the, the permits to launch their boats. And we just let them know again that it's first come, first served on the parking. We prefer that they park at home, make other arrangements, and be driven, or have somebody take their trailer away. And then, I forget what my third point was. But I, I just feel like we could, we could do, oh, we had the lock also. And I know that that got stolen, it got broken, but that's another way to prevent, to at least attempt to permit, prevent people from park, from launching their boats until, well, I guess they had the code, so they could just go whenever they, whenever they wanted, once the launch was open. But at dawn, yeah.
Councilmember Evans.
I know we just got the parking lot restripped. Are we going to put up signage, or is there signage already that strictly says boat parking only?
I've not verified for myself yet, but I had my maintenance supervisor say that signs were up at the entrance to the parking lot that say it is for boat trailer parking.
Okay. And I do think that there's an issue that needs to be discussed within the council that we would be remiss if not bringing up. And that was the, if I remember correctly, there was a very robust discussion on this last year when we, when we decided what we did. The one issue that was not discussed was the collateral damage that was done. I, we got several complaints from the residents around that area about these people littering their front yards and the damage that happened to the, to the, to the front yardage of our residents with the people that were parking there. And it's something that the council needs to consider as far as when they make a decision on this, that there, there is collateral damage, that a lot of the residents having to fork out money to repair their front yards, and to, and there has to be some sort of monitoring system to keep people from just throwing their trash into people's yards. Oh, yes, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilperson Fullerton that we should keep it open for local residents only, and no one else uses it, and then we have to have an issue with large boats, which I know still will have that. We can put a sign that says maximum length, the normal-sized boat, the great big one shouldn't park there anyway. There's no place for them. And you, you get there enough, you can park your boat. Trailer, rather than parking life, if you're a local resident, or take it home, do it. They're used to the process. That shouldn't cause a problem with all over the city that way. And I don't know how many people we had that were just from the city using the boat launch, but I would think that would be able to control it that way enough to at least keep the local ones able to place the boat, launch their boats. Since it's a city, they're paying taxes for that boat launch to help people have boats. They want someplace to put it, and with our city, it's there. We make, should be able to make use of it that way.
Okay, Councilmember Fullerton.
Well, I was just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chief.
I just have a comment on, even if we do open it up only to the City of Bonnie Lake residents, we're still going to have to monitor that lot because there's no way, current configuration, for somebody to launch a boat knowing that they have a parking spot. They would launch their boat, go over there and find out they don't have a parking spot, and their options are going to be to go back and retrieve your boat, which I would guess most people are not going to do, or park illegally, or park in a neighborhood. So there has to be somebody, whether we open it up to city residents or to everybody first come, first served, it's going to have to be monitored because otherwise it will be a free-for-all. Because we, we don't have that ability to find out if there's parking prior to launching. So that, that's my main concern with, with that approach, is whether you open it up to city residents only, or everybody first come, first served, it's going to require monitoring, so when it's full, it, it's shut down.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so what exactly did we do before we opened up the Moriarty property, which is now the new park? Because I know there wasn't parking before, and then we ended up opening up that dirt lot at the time, and that allowed for 100 cars or so to be able to park. But before that, there still wasn't parking. There's never been parking. Now we have an additional 120 parking spots at the new park for the cars. So we do have a lot more parking than we did last year. It's just not for the boat launch. But last year, we had no parking for cars, and we had no parking for the boat trailers. So now we have both, minimal, but we have parking for, for the citizens that just want to go to the park. and hang out. And then we also have minimal parking for the launch. So it is, it's a little bit different situation than what we had last year. Maybe a slight improvement. It's not awesome, but it's something. And I think if we keep the, the rules the same, I do understand what you're saying about having an officer there, or not an officer, but a hired security there to kind of watch the launch. But I think if we let the people know, you know, plan on parking at home, just plan on doing it like it was last year. And if you get, if you happen to get a parking spot for your trailer, then, you know, blessings for the day, you know? Happy day.
How are people going to know that that come from Tacoma or wherever they come from to use our lake? They're going to come out all this way and they're not going to be guaranteed a spot and they're not going to be able to turn around and go home. I just.
But we're only opening it up to city council. I mean, we're all city, not city council, city. Wait, wait.
I got a city resident, they're not guaranteed a parking spot just because you have a pass. I'm just worried about it. It's going to be tough to manage if we open it in a limited capacity. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
And I don't want expectations to be that if you buy a boat pass that you're going to get a parking spot. It's not the reality with twenty-six spots. And again, it's going to be on my staff and Ryan's staff to manage this.
And I'll just go ahead. Oh, I was just, if I could, just really quick, when we're talking about staffing, as was already discussed with Ballfields, again, Parks Department has two employees. So.
Not bragging.
It's not bragging. I'm telling you, Public Works will not respond. We cannot.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
I, my options would be option four and that's option two and three. Open it up only to the city and as much as I wouldn't want to pay the seventy-two thousand dollars, it seems like that may be the only way to, I won't say successfully manage it, but manage it without the resources burdening your two departments already. And so, so it'd be limited to, not the people coming from Tacoma, but at least ours, that should the parking lot be full from the lot attendants, they will at least already be aware. And if they had their passes last year, will be, you know, somewhat prepared for alternate parking outside of a neighborhood and, and put that onus back on the patrol office, not patrol officers, but the, the security officers there to manage that.
What about video monitoring, Chief?
I need somebody to do it.
Yeah, still video monitoring, having somebody monitor by video, who is going to do that? And who are they going to communicate with? Somebody's going to have to physically put a barricade up or physically tell people they can't launch. So in theory, if somebody's monitoring remotely via video, by the time somebody's noticed, we could have, you know, two launches with no place to park.
Okay.
So.
Oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
I just, so a couple of thoughts. So yeah, I like kind of the mixture of what everybody is saying. I do like kind of the idea of what Councilmember Evans is saying as well. I think the two questions, question and a statement, maybe I'll start with the statement first. I think when the consultants came, I was a little underwhelmed. I thought there was going to be a little bit more in regards to kind of, you know, the expedient answers we were looking for as far as, you know, Ellen York is concerned. And yeah, I definitely agree with you, Chief Jeter, as far as just the functionality of that launch. And so I'm hoping that the consultants know that aspect of it, that we are curious of what it would be like if we were to actually improve that launch and make it what it's supposed to be. And, or you know, residents would like it to be, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Where's the seventy-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars going to come from, I guess? Question. Because it does say it was not in the, not included in the biennial budget. So then, yeah, where's that coming from?
This is Ryan's. Do you have an answer for that?
There's a couple.
We a mid-budget amendment, most likely coming from Indian Fund balance.
Okay.
I'm sure that's probably what she's nodding her head.
She's like, oh yeah, you could use some ARPA funds for, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you could use ARPA funds too, or I'll just have Councilmember Evans be my de facto finance person.
Well, and, and you know, as pointed out previously, that, that, there's always this problem, right? It's an ongoing thing. I think that's why the consultants were probably maybe kind of a little bit late at some point on, but it's, it was, the problem's always been there before. You know, no matter how big the parking lot is, there's always issues. So, and it is what it is. That's, that's why any of the solutions that you propose, again, I come back to like, you know, we have to have a continual feedback from staff is like, yeah, you know, that was a really dumb idea. That lasted for like two minutes and we decided to close that one off because it's not working, you know? We, that's like, I don't know, you know, right? Because you're always going to have a limited parking issue. We don't have the island where you drive out on and you count cars as they go out and you count them as go in. Ultimate, right? That doesn't exist and it's probably never going to exist in Bonnie Lake.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fullerton.
Now I forgot what I was going to say. You go and then I'll go.
I just sent out to the Public Safety Committee, Ryan, Chief and Leslie to put on April's a discussion about boat sizes, not necessarily for this season, but something to look at for legislation in future for maximum boat size.
Cool.
So we can have that discussion next month as well.
Like you're looking.
Future works.
Well, was this going to be in an upcoming consent agenda?
I think the chief is just looking for, you know, the overall concept.
What do they need to do next?
Part two.
Oh, yeah, part two, yes.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm hearing here though is that it sounds like we're looking at for the twenty twenty-three season, a combined number two, number three, where we're going to focus on city residents only, but we are also going to pursue hiring assistants to monitor the lot and the boat launch. Is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Fullerton. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't.
She remembers.
She remembers.
So I remembered my question. So as far as protecting the property of the other citizens who live nearby that were getting kind of vandalized and abused as well, is there any way for us to put like no parking signs, kind of like they did on Sky Island Drive? And like, I haven't seen anybody park on Sky Island Drive since I saw those signs go up. I mean, maybe one in a blue moon, but other than that, can we put something in front of these homes that says, you know, no authorized boat trailer park or, you know, no unauthorized boat trailer parking period?
I don't know about doing that because technically that's not a use that's disallowed. I mean, people are, can park that way in Bonnie Lake under most circumstances.
Yeah, Fitz, I was just talking to Jennifer about that, that a lot of the places the trailers will not fit. They'll be out in the road, so it will be a traffic hazard. But as far as parking on the shoulder, there are vehicles, if they're parked legally currently, there's not a lot that we can do. And I know those roads are pretty narrow. Last year, a lot of them parked over, I can't remember the name of development. It's a little farther north of Church Lake or south of Church Lake Drive to the east. A lot of people park there, but the road is wide enough. I know the people on one ninety-fourth and that area, they're the ones that suffer the most. And I know that Ryan had brought something forward about making some of those areas no parking, if my memory serves.
Well, one of the things that we've been entertaining is creating an RPZ, a residential parking zone. So each of those residents that lives along there gets a parking pass or a number of parking passes, you know, one for their vehicles and then one they can give out to guests. Anyone who doesn't have that, parked illegally.
And I know they do that in Sumner around the high school so that the high school kids don't park down certain streets. And the kids know where they can and can't park and they know they're going to be towed if they, if they park there without a permit.
We have that here with our high school too.
Yeah, so, I mean, can we do that for like part of your, part of your.
If I made, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm turning.
I was just.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah, Ryan.
Put that back to Ryan, please.
So I was going to say we can, the city council legally can create, you can do a residential parking zone, but you could also create a note. Yeah, in which case you would pass a law that's for the boundaries, assuming they're public streets.
Of where there will be no trailer parking allowed. And then you'd have to post signs saying no trailer parking allowed, Bonnie Lake Municipal Code, whatever, at which case the police then could ticket and or tow trailers that are violating that law. So that's something that the council wants.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
There is.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just had a question on the seventy-two thousand dollar amount. I know you talked about somebody monitoring entry to the park, a, somebody doing a foot patrol, somebody monitoring the ballards essentially, and somebody monitoring parking. I wonder if we just combine one of those and cut this number in half essentially. The person doing, you know, the foot patrol essentially, could they also handle stopping trailers or whatnot?
They would have, once it closes down, yes, once we've reached capacity, but up until then. So then the problem we have is, is typically when we're doing our count at the front gate, people are squirting around from a kayak rental. And the whole idea is a second person is to kind of monitor that and also monitor any alcohol violations or marijuana, those types of things. And if they're over at the boat launch, it's not getting done. We certainly can do it. It's just we lose an element of control at the beach, which safety is paramount there. And that's why we try to really discourage and get rid of the alcohol and not allow that to get there. I mean, it's certainly something we could do, but it's, they're forty-four dollars an hour per position, sixty dollars an hour on, for overtime. So Memorial Day, we would get overtime, Fourth of July and Labor Day. So those, that's what we come down to. I mean, we'll do whatever the council wants, but I mean, there's pros and cons and we lose a lot of the security if we do take somebody off that second position to put them over there to monitor the lot. On, on a hot day, it's probably fine, but if they're doing foot patrol and they're down by the kayaks and somebody comes and launches the boat, they got to come hoofing it over. I mean, they might get in good shape, but it would make it a little logistically challenging.
Oh, I'm in the wrong profession. Forty-four dollars an hour and then.
Well, that's what, that's what we pay the company.
Yeah, I don't think that the employee.
Twenty twenty-four, Mr. Johnstone. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we have one more?
No, I just lost my train of thought. Just a second.
I, I am, based on that conversation though, prepared to move, prepared to move on to the next issue if that is where we're at at this point.
Okay, so yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
With seventy-two thousand dollars, I know that in public safety, we had, you know, put out the possibility of, you know, making it so that people couldn't enter into the parking, trailer parking area, the twenty-six spots or whatever. Instead of it just being wide open, it having some sort of a gate mechanism. Like, is that just not possible? Where the gate like talks to the launch or something like that? I feel like that exists.
No, that was one of the things we discussed a while back for the twenty twenty-four, expanding out and possibly into some sort of arms, but.
Yeah, because then, then if you're talking, you know, if you're electronically talking here as you're launching your boat, then maybe it has some sort of access to the gate. I don't know.
We have an amazing Bonnie Lake robotics team.
Well.
High schoolers to do it, yeah.
Yeah, just.
I mean, that's not a bad idea.
Just as a response to that, there, there may be something like that available. It's not something that we have done much of a look into yet. I would question whether seventy-two thousand dollars would be enough for that, just in what we're seeing with pricing across the board on so many different things. I just don't know. So.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to throw it out there because, you know, like, is that a possibility that we could talk with the robotics club and they could come up with something? I don't know.
I wouldn't say this year, but I would say at some point in the future, some sort of almost like a turnstile, a separate entrance and exit where if they leave through the community or the, the.
Yeah.
Works.
Yes.
And that gate opens and closes, that now allows this one to open or a sign that says Fuller or, you know, like the parking lots at the malls where they have the light, the green light above it, you know, some sort of mechanism that shows there's an open stall.
Potential, you know, design desires.
They're not on their small.
I wouldn't count them out.
I, I guess without taking too, you know, going too far off here, what we're dealing with here though are symptoms of a bigger problem. And that is that the park is not currently configured to handle what it is that the users would like to do with it.
Yeah.
And so that is the bigger issue that I think we're going to be, you know, we will take a look at as part of the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan.
Well, that's good. All right, twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
I can't ask on one more opportunity to say that if we would just move the park, Ballfield, Allen York Park to Midtown Park, then we would, like I've been asking for, for years. And Mr. Evans has brought forward ways for us to do that. And then Allen York Park Ballfield could be a parking lot and the problem will be solved.
Oh, I got to say. Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. So I'll, I'll try and make this as brief as possible. We're going to go back to the, the prior budgeting season. And staff was asked to put together a decision card that would, the idea being that it would contain a budget that would support the construction of a watercraft trailer parking, parking lot on top of the existing Field Four. So next to the parking lot that was just restripped for watercraft trailer parking and it would be constructed on the ball field that is right there. That was approved as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. It was also discussed as part of a larger multi-year plan to provide more parking out at Allen York Park. This came up, I believe it was actually the week before budget was approved, maybe it was after, is our last meeting, I believe, of the year. There seemed to be maybe some hesitancy in going that direction. And at that point, the discussion was to bring this back after the new year to discuss further. So what is up in the air right now is, is that where we are to build a new parking lot? Again, staff came up with three options. It's pretty straightforward. It's to go ahead and move forward as planned with putting a parking lot on, on existing Ballfield Four. There is an option to perhaps build a parking lot on the site of the current Public Works Center. That would, there is money in the twenty twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget for demolition of the Public Works Center. However, there is not enough money, I don't believe, we've not looked at costs yet to support construction of a new parking lot on that piece of property. So that would require revisiting. So those are the first two options. If, if either of these are the preferred options, we need to know right away so we can get started on the project and have any hope of making sure that this is complete prior to the twenty twenty-four boating season. The third option, of course, is, is kind of a do-nothing option. It's waiting to see what the results of the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan is and see how a parking lot would fit into the overall plan that we decide to settle on for Allen York Park. However, going that route means that we will not have additional parking for the twenty twenty-four boating season. So that's what I have for you for now and I look forward to your direction.
Okay. Any discussion, Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, it was, it was my thought process that, that was agreed on when, when we did the, I think there was some kind of a miscommunication, but when we did vote on that budget, that was in my mind, it was to go ahead and take Ballpark Four, which has lost its parking lot now anyway, and turn that into boat launch parking. And that would give us quite a few extra spaces. And then hopefully in the future, we can take the Public Works and make it the building, once it gets torn down, then turn that into boat launch parking or car parking dependent, depending on which is more needed after we've got the additional boat launch parking.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I agree and was under the same impression as well, that the Public Works Center would be demoed. I know that there probably has to be some kind of testing in that area as well, because I know it's, it's a lot of grading there. But, and that my thought was that it was all going to become boat trailer parking because of all the parking we've gained, you know, up at the, the new Ballfields. Especially because the capacity for just a bunch of regular cars is, is a bit much for the park anyway.
Just clarifying question. I want to make sure I'm following. Are you stating that you're, you are under the assumption that we were moving forward with both a parking lot on the Ballfield and at the Public Works Center?
No, I knew that we were talking about, yes, the Ballfield Four to move forward, to wait on the Public Works area yet to demo the building and that that whole area was going to be considered for boat trailer.
And that was something we discussed in public safety as a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right, yes.
Budget option. It was just, yeah, it wasn't anything concrete yet. It was.
Yeah.
Love non-concrete.
Brainstorming.
But not the, not the Ballpark Four.
Yeah, Ballfield Four was already in the budget, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Swamen. So it's kind of the chicken and egg almost, right?
So it's kind of the chicken and egg almost, right? You know, it's very difficult because unless you're going to assume that you're just going to ignore whatever the consultants are going to say to us, right? Which I don't have a problem with, frankly. Yeah, that'd be good, right?
We got where we are though. They told us to build the, the ball field, we did, now we're broke.
So, you know, that, that kind of thing's going on in the back of my mind there. It's kind of like, well, wait a minute, if you, if you're absolutely set on increasing that, I don't even know the size, right? You know, how do you establish what that size target is? When you could really, reality, you know, you hear conversations, exactly, yeah, yeah. The size, as Councilman Fullerton was pointing out, you know, more is better on that. But if, what if they're like, yeah, that boat launch absolutely doesn't work, you know? What the chief's been hammering at for years is like the boats can't be there, they're too big, they don't work. You know, and you're really going to get the best use out of it if you go non-motorized and do something else. You build a boat launch somewhere else. How does that work if you've just spent two hundred thousand dollars half engineering slash doing a parking lot, right? You know, that's the one kind of concept of it.
I don't see it ever becoming a, a man-powered launch.
No, yeah, I tend to agree.
I think it needs to be fixed up before we do that.
Yeah, so, you know, but we don't even have the target from the consultants, what you're looking at. I hear, I hear, you know, we'd like to get around a hundred plus spaces or something, but, you know, where's that at, right? So me being the engineer type individual, I'm thinking, I don't have a target, how can you, you know, I'm just, I'm going around and around, I'm stuck. Because there's, you know, as we know, the Ball Field Four, there could be some of that area in Ball Field Four area that you actually don't want to use, because if you did a wetlands delineation out there that hasn't been done yet, that probably needs to be done. There's also an Eagles Nest out there, that parking lot, that may prevent some activities going on in there. But there's those kind of issues, the topography issues that council members were mentioning. You know, we need to move ahead on working on that and how do you do it in a smart way, right?
Councilmember Evans.
Based on this proposal, it looks like it's another thirty-two, thirty-three potential spots. Engineering can change that based on, on what Councilmember Swatman was saying. You say that it's not going to be sufficient enough as far as the finances go, and I would tend to agree. Do you have a ballpark to get rid of the ballpark?
A ballpark to get rid of Field Four?
How much more beyond the five twenty-five that we have budgeted?
I do not at this time.
Okay.
And Councilmember Baldwin.
Which indicates where we are in the meeting.
And, you know, there are, there are all kinds of variations, right? Because there's, you know, if you go straight back there, vast majority of Ball Field Four over there is not used. That's, it's unused for a ball field and there's different styles of ball fields, whatever you're doing there. If you're doing like, whatever they do, the softball fields are smaller and stuff like that. You know, the area that you need, plus or minus, you know, there's all kinds of weird questions there.
Yeah, I am, I am not against what Councilmember Swatman is saying. I, I would be willing to hear from the consultant. I think it's just, when I think of consultants plus government, I think of like a slow.
Exactly, I know.
Really slow, yeah. And so I think that's where, you know, we're trying to give you direction, but now we might halt the brakes again. I don't know.
Okay, Councilmember Watson and then Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, and I see the point where we should use in the Ball Park Four, but I've always had a problem with us tearing up a Ricker Ball Field that we could use. We've also talked about not having too many boat areas down there. We've talked about having traffic, too much traffic down there. Talked about not having too many big, large boats down there, so why are we making another parking spot? And we can't even get them in out there as it is, so why would we? I understand, I understand why you want to do it, I agree. But we don't have a way to control the people that are coming down or the boats that are coming down there, so we keep it limited. If we don't, if we mark areas and no boat trailer parking in the home areas around that area, we'll help control it. And then as the time goes on, we'll find more spaces, be able to park more boats properly. But again, more boats are just causing more and more traffic. You know, see us solving a problem, we're just adding to the problem.
And Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we added to the problem when we built the field over there, as you stated earlier. That created all kinds of problems and listening to the consultant on that was not a great idea. So I guess my question would be, doesn't the consultant take into effect, into account what we are currently planning to do with having a parking lot there?
Well, they, they could if we knew what we were really doing, but we don't know what to tell the consultant.
And that's what you're asking tonight, is what the council wishes to do with this. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good. So we set aside money already to do this though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would support moving forward with what we already said we were going to do to the people. When we took away the Moriarty property for the field, we told people, well, no, we're going to get you parking, we're going to get it over here. And now I feel like it's a bait and switch.
Councilmember Fullerton and then Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, so the thing is, is that we actually did have all of that parking at the Moriarty Lot. We could hold, on a good day, we could hold a hundred boat trailers there. And, yeah, more, and then we took that away. And you're saying, you know, oh, well, there's going to be all these boats, there's going to be all of these things. But there's always been those boats, there's always been that size of boats. They were just parking at the Moriarty property. And then we took that, that parking away from them with the promise that we're going to have parking for you. I thought it was going to be twenty twenty-three, but now it's being pushed to twenty twenty-four. And I don't want to put a, put the brakes on that as far as Ball Park Four. We promised the people a park, we gave them a park, we've promised the people parking. And now we're trying to do parking and like, it's been brought up that we did listen to the consultants before. And, you know, now we have a ballpark that everybody's upset about. So, and no, and no boat trailer parking. So I would like to proceed forward with the plan. We do have, right here in front of us, how many parking spots that they believe based off of the topography that they do have, that they're going to be able to fit on the Ball Park Four, which is going to create, it'll give us close to ninety spots, which is going to be close to what we had when we were at the Moriarty proper, well, it'll be more like fifty, but.
Yeah, it'll be fifty, fifty-nine is what we're anticipating, somewhere in that neighborhood. I don't want there to be any, any.
That's better than, that's better than twenty-six and it's better than zero. So, I mean, I don't know, I just, I feel like we need to move forward. We need to quit being fish out of water and flip-flopping around and just make a decision and do what we say we're going to do.
Okay, Councilmember Evans and then Councilmember Reclams.
Support basically what everyone said there, Councilmember Deputy Mayor Carter was saying, and that is, you know, we did agree to this, it is in our budget, it will be higher than what we expect. That's, that's the nature of the beast when we deal with government and project funding. I don't know that there's ever been a project that came in on budget, let alone under budget. So that, that estimate for five twenty-five was just kind of a placeholder for what may need to be done out there. But, you know, we did agree that as a council, we were going to move forward with this, this is why we did put it in the budget. We did talk to the people and we did promise them this, it is half of the spots of what you could park at Moriarty. I don't know that there's going to be more than that at any point in the future based on, even if the, the Public Works Center's gone, I mean, we're, I don't know, we're going to come up with another half million dollars or more to do that. But I think at this point, doing this and then kind of coming back to it and seeing, you know, in a few years, another budget cycle or two, what that has done as far as impact, and then kind of make a decision from there. Maybe bypass this particular portion on the, the consultant's plan because we've got a plan or include this is what they would be looking at as an option, not, not anything else.
Okay, Councilmember Reclams.
Good.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
Okay, just to make sure we don't continue circling and circling and Ryan is fully aware what we want to do. We are saying to go ahead and move forward with Ball Field Four, right? And are we telling him that we want the Public Works Center demoed?
That's a discussion for a whole nother budget.
Well, he has it on the.
Did you say demoed?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Public Works Center already, there's money already budgeted for.
Yeah, but not, not, not the correct, and not to build a parking lot.
Have we?
Create a project, build a new parking lot on top of the existing Ball Field Four.
Excellent.
Let the record reflect, I have two thumbs up for that. And we can move on now to, let's see, we now have a discussion action item, Madam Clark.
This is AB twenty-three fifty-four, Resolution thirty-one forty. The council action would be to authorize award of the emergency contract with Olympic Roofing for the Public Safety Building roof repair.
Okay. Second. Okay, let's discuss it. Any, any discussion on the matter before citizen commentary? Oh, yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
I just wanted to say that the Public Safety Building, as we all know, is indeed falling apart in many aspects. This is just one of many, and so I will be in support of this. I know it's moved into now an emergency issue because, you know, it's an emergency now.
Okay, any further discussion on the matter before we turn it over to citizen comments? All right, time for citizen commentary. This, citizens, this will be your time to address the council on item AB twenty-three fifty-four only. The city will now enable the video and microphone for these, for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and then we would move to the virtual. So anybody in the audience who wishes to address the issue of item AB twenty-three fifty-four?
The roof.
It's the roof.
It's the roof.
Public Safety Building.
For the police department.
Okay, with that being said, anybody virtual? You will have five minutes and then state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, I believe we've given ample time for citizen commentary on that. Do we have anybody else for the good of the order before we move on? Okay, the city will now disable all video and microphone for those attending virtually. Council, do we have any further discussion on this matter? Okay, all in favor of this agenda bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I heard.
Almost.
She's talking to someone else.
Oh, I see, okay. Well.
We're saying a prayer, I'm not sure.
And. Barry, you're not muted.
We don't have any more business for the workshop. We will now adjourn the city council meeting into what we call as an executive session for thirty minutes pursuant to RCW four-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero-I to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel. There will be no action to follow, so we are now adjourned. Thank you, Bonnie. Party break, yes.